September 27, 2021, in the Wacoit Meeting Room. Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee. We're broadcasting live on local cable channel 18. We're streaming live on Town Hall Mashpee website, And we'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And we'll have a moment of silence. And we're going to recognize a ZBA member for the passing of James Reforth. Please. Thank you. I need approval of the following Monday, September 13, regular session minutes.
Second.
Roll call, Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Public comment. Start off with Susan D'Argel.
Dangle.
Dangle. Come on up to the podium.
The podium?
Yes, okay.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me come and speak to you again. It's been just three months since I was here last when we learned that Mashpee Wakeby Pond was closed to swimming ahead of the July 4 holiday. We told you that we were forming a group, and indeed, we have. In that time, we have recruited 107 people on our Facebook group. We have 82 who have requested our regular newsletters. And we have 50 active volunteers. We have also reached out to other local groups, including Mashpee Clean Waters and our very own Mashpee Wakeby Lake Management Committee. We recently held a Let's Make a Splash event on September 12, which drew seven swimmers who swam from Adequin Park in Mashpee to Rider Beach in Sandwich, which is well over three miles, including your own David Whedon.
Please.
We had a number of kayakers and pontoon boats, a terrific help from Rick Santangelo at the Harbor Master. And it allowed us to forge alliances with local businesses, pond front owners, and most profoundly, the Wampanoag Tribe, who came out that morning to bless everyone with a smudging ceremony before the swim. Ken Farley allowed us access to their docks so that we could cheer our swimmers on. And the founder and director of the Native Land Conservancy also met us at the beach at our picnic to meet everyone and say hello, as our goals are closely aligned. Our alliance last met last week, and we renewed our charter. We have charter goals, actually. And we are immediately taking out a Get Out the Vote law sign campaign in the next few days to encourage residents to vote yes on Article 16 for a diagnostic study of Mashpee Wakeby Pond. And we will be also present at the town meeting to encourage folks as they walk inside. Our next goal arguably is our most important, and that is to prioritize the sewer ring of the ponds, in particular Mashpee Wakeby Lake, as it stands at the top of the watershed to Pompanas Bay. We are thrilled to see tonight's presentation and understand we will hear good news tonight. Please know that we stand with you, and our numbers clearly show that there is urgency here. We truly hope that the presentation tonight moves the needle at a much faster pace than previous projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jeannie Kempis?
Do you want me to take this off or leave it on?
It's up to you.
Your choice.
Good evening, thank you for your time this evening. I'm here on behalf of Sarah Chase, who unfortunately was unable to attend tonight's meeting. I'd like to read a letter into the record. Dear Madam Chair and members of the Board of Selectmen, it has come to our attention that there is an agenda item for your September 27 meeting describing a presentation, sorry, regarding Trout Pond with Dr. James Simmons as the presenter. As you might know, Trout Pond is located on private property owned by A.B. Chase Jr. since 1980. Although a presentation on Trout Pond might appear harmless at first glance, allowing it to proceed misuses the public meeting forum to promulgate one's view as to how someone else should use his own private property. Imagine the precedent this is setting by allowing this agenda item to proceed, allowing any member of the public a forum to discuss another resident's use of his or her private property. Additionally, this parcel is part of a development agreement process. Thus, any discussion regarding the future use or preservation of this parcel is appropriately discussed within the parameters established through the Cape Cod Commission Regulations and the Town of Mashpee zoning bylaw. It is not appropriate to circumvent the agreed-upon process by discussing the property in this setting, especially because neither Mr. Chase nor Mashpee Commons received notice of this agenda item. Trout Pond is a valuable environmental area that is host to many species of shorebirds, ducks, Canadian geese, red-winged blackbirds, deer, foxes, and many other wildlife. If the goal of Dr. Simmons' presentation is to advocate to protect Trout Pond, we want to go on the record that the proposed Mashpee Commons Expansion Project not only preserves Trout Pond, but would also significantly improve the trail system in the area for public use by the community. Environmental stewardship and sustainability continue to be a hallmark of Mashpee Commons, as it has since the community's inception. Most notably, its commitment to protect local waterways from toxic nitrogen pollution generated by standalone septic systems by building its own wastewater treatment plant in 1988. If you have any other questions about this privately-owned parcel, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Sarah Chase, Partner, Mashpee Commons LP. Thank you.
Thank you. Ava Costello?
Good evening. It's been a while since I've seen you all. I'm here on less serious business than the previous two presenters. I'm here representing the Mashpee Historical Commission with an invitation for the Select Board, as well as the whole community, to join us on Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 11, which is a Monday. We will be having an open house of the archives, an open house of the One Room Schoolhouse. And we hope to see as many history buffs and people who want to learn a little bit more about our past at that time. It's located in the community park, for those of you who don't know, and the hours will be 11 to 2. And we hope to see you there. One other thing, on another good note. We, last year because of COVID, was not able to give our Historic Preservation Award. So this year, we're going to be giving two awards, and I'm here to announce the recipients this evening. The 2019 award is going to Ramona Peters and the Native Nature Conservancy for the work that they've done in preserving the Three Islands in Wakeby Pond. The 2020 award is going to Rosemary Burns Love for the 150th, I can't say the sesquentennial special award for all of the work that she has done in writing, as well as being a commission member since, I was going to say 1886, but don't tell me I said that. Since 1986. So you will be reading more about both of those events in the local newspapers in the future. So thank you, and hope to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Cook?
Good evening. Richard Cook, 19, Pemblyne. And with respect to the young lady who was here earlier speaking about Trout Pond, so, is it appropriate for me to comment on?
It's public comment.
It's public comment, so. I think that Trout Pond is a, well, I know it's a very sensitive area, and I think the town should be looking at it with respect to input to the Mashpee River. There's a lot of water that goes into the Mashpee River from Trout Pond. And I know there's been some talk about what to do with the dam that's compromised at some point. But from my observation, it has been a godsend to Trout Pond because the water quality is a lot better in there now. So, actually Trout Pond was developed. It's not a natural body of water. It was, it's a bunch of springs that was dammed up back in the '30s or before by a John Farley. And it was created as a private enterprise to, you know, lure a bunch of guys down to do some trout fishing. And so it's an artificial body of water. So I think the town needs to take a long look at this whole Trout Pond area and look at it as very environmentally sensitive and before they make any decisions with the Commons or replacing a dam on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 6:35 has passed. We have a public hearing on the reorganization dated September 13, 2021, Administrative Code III, established by the Department of Wastewater Management, adoption of organizational chart, Town Manager Rodney Collins.
Yes, madam.
Want me to read the notice?
I need you to read the hearing, to open the hearing.
Pursuant to the provisions of the Mashpee Home Rule Charter, Article 5, Section 5-1B, the Town Manager has adopted a reorganization plan for the orderly, efficient, and convenient conduct of the business of the town dated September 13, 2021, a copy of which is appended to the Administrative Code section of these bylaws as Administrative Code III, which document is incorporated herein by reference. Said reorganization plan creates a new Department of Wastewater Management, which shall be charged with supervision and operation of all public wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal facilities in the town under the direction and oversight of the Town Engineer, who shall be appointed by and report to the Town Manager. Said hearing shall be conducted on Monday, September 27, 2021, at 6:35 PM in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Complete copy of the plan of reorganization will be available Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM in the offices of the Town Manager, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Residents are invited to attend the hearing or email their questions, comments in advance to bos@mashpeeass.gov.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yes, madam Chair, members of the board. Essentially, what this does is it provides another department within the town of Mashpee. The Town Engineer, who has been already hired, would become officially a department head. Although he is essentially acting as one right now, this would officially put his position into a department within the organizational structure of the town of Mashpee. And obviously, as we move forward with our wastewater objectives, I think it is important to have not only a department, but a department head or captain of the ship. And that's what this provides. And the engineer would be responsible for submitting a budget, just like any other department head. And he would obviously attend department head meetings and be a department head, just like the police chief or the fire chief or the director of recreation, et cetera, et cetera.
Any questions?
One that I have is, you know, looking at the table on the back, the last page there, I see the Community Development Director and the four different agents, the building commissioner, conservation agent, health agent, town planner. Just looking over, it seemed as though the Town Engineer would be, the responsibilities would correlate more so with that kind of cluster. I was wondering what the thinking was behind, you know, creating a separate department specifically with the Town Engineer as a director.
Good question. What I can tell you is that in 2008, that's the way it was structured and passed. And then what I can also say is you have the assessor, the treasurer, and the accountant, one of whom can be designated as the finance director. In this particular case, it's the accountant. In the departments that you just referenced, that title, which right now is not officially assigned or designated to any particular individual, would be one of the following. It would be the health agent, the conservation agent, or the building commissioner, or the planner. It would be one of those four.
You don't have a Community Development Director right now? You don't have anybody designated?
Nobody designated, but it was approved in 2000.
So they all effectively report to you, just as the rest of them to the left of it do?
Yes. And in terms of the historical perspective, what I think Selectman Whedon was trying to get to is, I don't remember the details in '08 in terms of how it evolved.
Thank you.
Anyone? Do we have any questions from the audience? It's a public hearing. No questions?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Roll call. Tom?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
You don't need a sanction or a blessing, do you?
No, this is just part of the process. And we go on to town meeting consistent with the charter and the Administrative Code.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a presentation on Trout Pond. Dr. James Simmons. I'm going to have Mr. Simmons come up. And this is a presentation. There is no dialogue from the audience?
He can sit here, Greg. He can sit here.
There's no dialogue from the audience, and there's no dialogue from us? It's going to make a presentation?
My name is Gregory Auger. I live at 249 Simon's Narrows. And I have had the privilege to work with two very important scientists on bats that involve both the meeting house and, more importantly, Trout Pond. I'd like to bring up Jim Simmons to talk. Jim is a scientist from Brown University.
Want me to sit? I don't need to. I can stand here. Okay to do this? Okay, all right. My name is Simmons. I work at Brown University. I study bats and their sonar for the United States Navy. I teach in biology courses on hearing at Brown University. And what I say has nothing to do whatsoever with Brown's official position on anything. I am here as a scientist and a citizen. You don't have to take anything that I say seriously. After all, I live on the other side of the canal. And you know what that means. Although the closest I came is I went to grade school in Fairhaven, which isn't all out far away. Anyway, for a long time, I have been studying the sonar of bats from the point of view of understanding not only what it's like to be a bat, but whether you can build devices that might be as good as a bat. The Navy is very interested in improving the qualities of its sonar systems to the level of performance of bats and dolphins. And for obvious reasons, it's very expensive to study dolphins, where you can bring a bat into a room and fly it around and figure out how it works. And the engineering issues that are related, for example, to the pave pause antenna, which is over by the canal just off the Bourne Bridge, which is a radar for finding ballistic missiles coming in from what used to be the Soviet Union. We'd like to know more about how bats can do this stuff. And a lot of the work began Trout Pond. Donald Griffin, who discovered echolocation in bats, started working on bats in the late 1930s, the bats that were living in the meeting house. He would band the bats and then travel up into the winter months into northern New England and discover these bats would migrate from here in Mashpee up to caves and rock crevices in New Hampshire and Vermont and in the Berkshires, and then come back. And how on earth can a bat, flying at night, go from middle of Vermont back to the same building year after year after year? We have no idea. And these animals can live for 20 or 30 years. From the point of view of their sonar, these bats are flying around Trout Pond in particularly large numbers, chasing insects. A single bat might be able to chase one insect, and we could imagine how that worked. You make a sound, you get an echo. You turn towards the echo, and you make another sound, and you chase the insect until you catch it. The problem is not that, it's that these bats fly in groups while they're doing that. And they're flying into clouds of insects while they're doing that. We very badly would like to know how multiple bats can fly together and not interfere with each other. We've made video recordings and sound recordings using technological methods that Greg Auger has developed and used there to document the fact that bats having these aerial dogfights, just like they're two Spitfires chasing two Messerschmitts or something like that. But they're doing it with sonar, and they're doing it in the dark. And we do not know how they can do that. We also know that the bat can fly into a cloud of insects, pick up one insect, home in on it, and capture, while another bat is flying into the same cloud of insects and capture that one without interfering with the other one. All this goes on every night at Trout Pond, and it's a particularly good place to study that. Historically, Trout Pond and the meeting place have been places of research on bats since the late 1930s. And in the last 20 years, we have learned a lot and need to learn a lot more about what Trout Pond can teach us about how these animals live so that we can better understand not only their biology. After all, if it weren't for the little brown bats, the malaria would still be here. And it'll probably come back as things warm up. Just a fact which I learned recently, I'd like to point out. In southern New Jersey, malaria was eradicated in 1956. That's not all that long ago. These little brown bats eat tons of mosquitoes, and they're the vectors that around here need to be dealt with. The large brown bats are vital for the local insect ecology and for controlling insects like moths and beetles that are pests. So from the point of view of the biology and the ecological value, we need to know more, and this is a place to study it. From the point of view of sonar and how sonar works, this is a place to study it. As I say, I'm from the other side of the canal. I am not here to tell you guys what to do. I'm just here to give you some perspective on what's happening there. Thank you for the opportunity to do this.
Thank you.
Okay?
Okay, 2021 Environmental Protection Agency Environmental Merit Award winner is our own Chucky Green. Chucky Green. Chucky Green retired in January 2021 as a Natural Resource Director of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, having benefited his tribe and community since his teenage years, motivated to make a difference in the lives of others. Chucky served on the Mashpee, Massachusetts Board of Selectmen from 2000 through 2009. And in 2008, he became Chair of the Board of Selectmen, a position not filled by a Mashpee Wampanoag tribal member in 30 years. Chucky also served as a leader in the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe as Vice Chairman from 1993 to 1996, and as Tribal Historic Authority Director and Preservation Officer from 2006 to 2012. Chucky was on the Mashpee Conservation Commission and was directed supervisor for the Barnstable County Conservation District, both from 1992 to 2000. He became district supervisor again in 2010. Through all these roles, protecting the tribe's natural resources was a priority. But Chucky's greatest gift to the environment was forming the tribe's Natural Resource Department in March of 2008, using an EPA grant. Chucky served as a Director and Assistant Director of the department. In 1995, Chucky helped establish the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge Partnership involving eight conservation landowners. From 2000 to 2012, he served on the board overseeing the Superfund cleanup of the former Otis Air Force Base. In 2008, he established the Mashpee Water Corporation in partnership with the tribe, the town, and the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth to monitor water quality of nearby waterways. In 2012, Chucky established a project addressing nitrogen loading and fish kill in the Mashpee River and Pompanas Bay system. And in 2012, he started an environmental science camp for tribal youth. In 2010, Chucky has partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to mitigate legal growth and restore habitat in the Sandtewett Pond. Chucky's lifetime investment, environmental leadership, and cultural preservation will have a lasting impact on the Mashpee Wampanoag tribal members. And when do you have time to do anything else? I want you to have the official citation from the Board of Selectmen and your award. Chucky, thank you so much. I want you to turn around and fold your flag, and the writer will take a picture.
Well, I didn't do it alone, but I have a whole lot of folks in support of a whole lot of folks here in the tribe, agencies. And I was just actually fortunate enough to do a small part of what I saw as my responsibility as a tribal leader. We believe that we're responsible for the next seven generations.
We all are.
But I mean, I haven't had enough time to get it all done.
Well, I think we have a few more years left, don't you? Thank you, Chucky.
Thank you, Chucky, for everything you've done.
Okay, Mike, drop that.
Yes, that is a hard one to top. Okay, next one. Presentation of Proposed Phase Two of the Comprehensive Wastewater Plan. Sewer Commission Chair, Mike Verpaas. Thank you, Michael.
Good evening. I'm Mike Verpaas. I live on Quinnaquidda Ave. And I'm joined tonight by other members of the Sewer Commission, Ken Dunn, Joe Lyons, and Ann Malone. We've been working pretty diligently to come up with a way of expanding the area of and accelerate the timetable for a projected Phase Two. It hasn't been easy. There's a lot of difficult decisions to make. But as we all know and have observed over the past couple of years, and more specifically, a couple of months, our waterways are in pretty bad shape. And we feel like we need to speed up the proposed sewer ring plan, maybe even cut it in half. The things that we need to do in order to do that with Phase Two, we need to change what has been called the what has been called the Comprehensive Watershed Nitrogen Management Plan to what we're going to more simply call Mashpee's Clean Water Plan. That's a submittal that's part of your package, and it is necessary because we need to demonstrate to the DEP and to MIPA that we are progressing from just looking at the estuaries to also looking at the lakes and ponds. So that's part of that package, you see, the report part. There's thousands of Title V systems in Mashpee. And I think it's a misnomer to think that they are protective of groundwater quality, especially in an area like Cape Cod that is so sensitive to nitrogen inputs. A regular newly built, completely in accordance with Title V regs, septic system puts out between 25 and 45 milligrams per liter of nitrogen. The plant we're proposing to build will put out three, an average annual concentration of three milligrams per liter, which is a pretty dramatic decrease. To that end, we are asking, as we gather information and we come up with cost estimates and preliminary plans, we are asking the Select Board to consider an article for the Spring 2022 Town Meeting Warrant to fund a 25% design of a newly configured Phase This groundwater flow map, which is kind of difficult to see, I realize, shows how the groundwater flows around Mashpee Wakeby Pond and Sandtewitt Pond. And around those areas, around the groundwater flow lines, which are in blue, there's an awful lot of development, an awful lot of development. And in lakes and ponds, it's generally been considered that phosphorus is the nutrient which affects growth. And we believe that's true here, but there's so much nitrogen coming into these water bodies that sometimes really different, strange things happen. For example, when you exceed a ratio of 16 to 1, nitrogen to phosphorus, it takes very little phosphorus entering the pond to trigger an algae bloom or a cyanobacteria growth. And the other reason we're concerned about nitrogen as well as phosphorus in these freshwater bodies is because recently it's been shown that nitrogen can cause cyanobacteria blooms on its own. So our new Phase Two, our modified Phase Two, is going to address the lakes and ponds, four lakes and ponds, Mashpee Wakeby, Sandtewitt, Ashument, and Johns. I hope that people can see these different areas that we've outlined. Phase One is kind of in the middle. And by the way, we last week sent off our application for SRF funding, which was a very significant milestone for us and for the town. Phase 2A through 2E are the newly configured areas that we are going to focus on. The three criteria that were used to select these areas are that they do address ponds and they do address estuaries, two for one, and they're connectable to the wastewater treatment plant that we are building at the transfer station. And we need to find appropriate discharge points for the effluent that we're going to be collecting.
Where would that be, Michael?
Right now, the facility itself, Site Four, will accept a fair amount of the effluent. We need to be looking for other places to discharge more, and we're, that's underway. We're working on that. These are flows that we've estimated will come from those areas. They're high. These are high. We are getting flows based on water use very shortly, and these numbers will come down significantly. But as you can see, it's far more ambitious than Phase One, and it's far more ambitious than the proposed Phase Two in the 2015 GHD report. So we are hopeful that because of the areas we've selected, they will withdraw contaminated, we will be withdrawing contaminated groundwater, sending it to the treatment plant. And because of how they're located, we are hopeful that they will improve water quality in the Mashpee River rather quickly. A lot of those areas have very short flow distance to the river. And as Selectman Gottlieb continues to point out, once they get into the river, in a day, they're in the bay. So those were the strategic points that we tried to address with this new Phase Two. It is approximately seven to eight times what Phase One is in terms of the volumes. But we think that it's necessary if we're truly going to speed things up and accelerate the process. We will be coming up with some cost estimates shortly for the Selectmen to consider. And again, we hope, we're hopeful that you will add an item to the 2022 Spring Town Meeting Warrant that allows us to do 25% drawings for this new Phase Two. Thank you.
Stay right there for a minute, Michael.
Questions?
Michael, I have a few questions. So are you saying that this proposed Phase Two is just, you're segmenting them as A, B, C, D, and E, but you're still lumping them as Phase Two?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Because I mean, I could see, and this could be a lot longer discussion, but, so I'm assuming like Phase E would be...
2E.
2E would be potential of, with the base build out, that could be, you know, because we're talking five, seven, 10 years down the road, even if we move forward now from my estimates, no?
Well, we are, we are planning to move rather quickly on the western side of town. We've already met with the folks who are soon to own the treatment plant, and they have enough space at the existing treatment plant to take the flows from 2E immediately if we so desire, if we can get the pipes in the ground that quickly.
Okay.
And we are talking to the town of Sandwich, who is also interested in a portion of those flows.
Okay.
So, but there's room for us, especially if we move quickly.
Answer my question. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
David? Tom? We are going to have, we're going to have table discussions. In November will be our first one. And the first table meeting will be wastewater and water. And that way, we'll be able to have more information from Michael and the committee to present at our roundtable discussion. So this is more or less a start for people to think about and for us to have questions when we sit around the table and discuss this further. And, but we can start with some now. David?
No real questions. I read over it. You know, I know the waste, the nitrogen plan, it was kind of specific to addressing the base. And I think this is a more holistic approach. I appreciate, you know, you trying to expedite the cleanup and restore the bodies of water and not look at the freshwater ponds as an afterthought after we get the full Phase One built out. So, you know, I commend this and look forward to, you know, as the project develops, getting it expedited as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Tom?
I would agree with Dave. I think this expedited, the project is what's most important at this point. I think we're all on board. We know we have to protect the pace of our estuaries. We're way behind in this. The sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned, so I'm behind it 100%.
You know, as liaison, I've been going to the commission's meetings, and I want to commend them for taking a really big bite at the apple at the same time they were bringing forward the financing package. You know, the town engineer's been a great help in that effort. So, you know, this is a big step, and I think I'd like to see us, you know, vote to endorse the sewer commission's exploration of an expanded Phase Two. Because I think really what they put forward is a, is a great, bold step, a lot of questions to be answered, especially around costs and feasibility and treatment. But, you know, they've taken a big step forward and voted to endorse this plan. I think we owe it back to them to say that we are with you in the exploration of it, recognizing they're going to come back with costs and timelines, and we'll see what we can actually do. But, you know, you have to start big if you're not going to be small. And so I would make a motion that we endorse the sewer commission's exploration of an expanded Phase Two and keep alive the notion that, that we would pursue design funding in the spring of 2022.
Second on that motion.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you so much, Michael.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you to the whole sewer commission.
Well, thank you for having me. Discussion and approval of a liquor license amendment, application for a change of officer in charge of beneficial interest for the 99 West LLC, doing business as the 99 Restaurant, Ate Ryan's Way, Mashpee, Mass., 99 West LLC. Is there anyone here?
I don't see anybody here.
Should we go forward, or should we put it on?
Yeah, I mean, the way I read this, Carol, was because the 99 has...
Yes.
I don't know. I forget, 100 or something locations?
Yes.
They did this reverse process where the state approves it and then sends it down to the towns. I don't think we need, I don't think we need or expect them here. So I'd make a motion, we...
I think it's a formality.
It's a formality.
I'd make a motion that we approve the change of officers for 99 West LLC, DBA 99 Restaurants.
Second on that as well.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Resignation from the Sewer Commission, Precinct One, representative term to expire June 30th, 2024, Bradford H. Pixley.
Pixley. I'd make a motion, we accept Mr. Pixley's resignation and send him a note of appreciation. He's been a member of the commission for a number of years, and we appreciate his time and service.
Second on that motion as well.
Yes.
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 I would also point out, if I might, that I got a letter today of interest I forwarded to town manager and to the sewer commission chair from Meredith Harris, who is a resident of Precinct One, I believe is here. And she's interested in it, and I'd like us to just formally pass her a letter of interest down to the sewer commission and ask the sewer commission to meet with Ms. Harris as soon as they can and come back to a recommendation for us.
Oh, I think that's great. That's good.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yep, we don't need to vote on that.
I don't think so. Do we? That's normal process.
That's very good.
So Meredith, talk to Mike.
It's a good place to meet. Discussion and approval of the following special event applications, a one-day liquor license, singing on the Commons, Sunday, October 3rd, 2021, at 3:00 to 5:00. Mashpee Community Park gazebo, Buster Waters, Glory of God on Cape Cod. Do we have any representatives? I don't think we do, but...
I don't think we need any.
We all got emails from them today.
We did. We did. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the special events application, singing on the Commons.
Second.
Roll call, John?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. One-day liquor license and waiver of fee, October 2nd, 2021, rain date, October 3rd, 2021, 10 to 4, Mashpee Commons Village Green, Robin Blakeman, Kiwanis of Cape Cod, Mashpee. This is a great event.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call, David?
Yes.
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 Very good. Communications and correspondence, new business, nothing. Liaison reports. John?
No.
No? Andrew?
We've been busy in sewer land, but no.
Well, David?
Nothing this time?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay. Town manager updates.
Yes, Madam Chair, the Regulatory Board Roundtable meeting dates, I believe you referred to them, but tentatively, they were Monday, November 8th and Monday, December 13th.
We're going to clue the sewer commission on that this time, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So you do that.
Okay?
Yes.
Just so they hear.
Yep.
COVID-19 cases, as of today, there were four new positive cases. No deaths. There are 23 current cases, no cases moved out of isolation. So our current count stands at 1,055. You did mention the unfortunate passing of the ZBA meeting member, a ZBA member, I should say. The inner channel Papaneset Bay dredging is scheduled for September 26th through October 5th. And last, but certainly not least, I think you received the information relative to the ribbon cutting at Cape Cod Tech, October 8th. Although there was supposed to be a reservation in, if any board member wants to go, tell us following this meeting, and we'll make sure that you're signed up. And anything else?
That's it.
That's it.
Carol, just one other. I forgot to mention, the Child's River Bog Restoration, River Restoration Project was, had a ceremonial completion last Thursday. The town was represented there. As you recall, we provided support and long-term lease of the Farley Boggs. It's a great project. The place looks fabulous. So pretty soon, you can't go out there yet because they're still doing plantings, and so it's a little bit restricted, but it's another great example of what environmental restoration can do to heal long-term damage to the resource. So, you know, Mashpee played a big role in that, so people should go check it out once it's open.
Very good. Okay.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone.